That number from our general fund reserves toward OPEB liabilities. And you could do that on a regular basis. You can make that recommendation this season. We come back with a budget amendment next month to do that from our reserves. And then every year, as Councilmember Wood was indicating, when we scrutinize the parcel tax and its amounts, you can allocate a specific percentage at that time as well.
So, okay, so that was my, that was my first two comments on that. So I think that those, I'd like the council to at least consider that, first off, that, you know, we take, we take Section 3, not as an automatic, but we actually include that and ask the city manager to make sure that as part of our budget process, that we actually look into making sure that if we're taxing, we're taxing properly. And if we don't need to tax, we exercise our rights here to reduce the tax requirements and that we, we also keep an eye on those off-balance sheet liabilities, which every council member, you know, sitting up here today, and as well as Mr. Carlson before, before he left, all spoke very passionately about that we need to keep an eye on those things and we need to address them as quickly as possible. We didn't create them, but we've inherited them and we need to make sure that future councils don't have that. Secondly, with regards to the, the changing of the numbers and things like that, if you look at the circus club numbers, that number was established about 20 years ago or something close to that. The city manager was very, was very diligent in putting together, you know, today for us how many acres there were in that. Mr. Dobbie then assumed that if the private club was cut up into acre lots, that would be about $22,000 as opposed to 10. If you put it into quarter acre lots, it's substantially more. And so I, I think that really, when we had our July 3 meeting, when we talked about this subject, I think serious consideration needs to be for raising that fee to about $25,000. I too would eventually like to get to a flat tax. I think option C is a, is a bridge too far. And I think it, it does hit the, the very small lot owners, and I think that that would be more or less unfair. I think when we did the survey, of course, the survey was a survey. It wasn't, hey, here, here's marketing material, here's a ballot measure, you know, so we're not making a promise to people. It was a couple people get called on the phone and fill out an internet website. And as I said, the question was, you know, would you consider paying $750? And so, yes, I agree with the mayor here. People know what they're paying, but the number that was put in front of them was 750. So I don't agree with going to option C. I think that we should have maybe a little bit of discussion on the interim, and maybe even those numbers need to be adjusted a little bit. They do bring in a little bit less revenue, but we pick it up by the private club. But I think, I don't think B seriously jeopardizes the approval of, of this. But, but again, I'll, I'll take, you know, input from, from others as well. I am cautious. We want to make sure this is passed. You know, this is a very important tax, and the town does need it to maintain the capital plan. We put together a five-year capital plan under the mayor's direction. And we started this last year, you know, with Mr. Kashawagi, giving us a five-year plan, giving us a projection so that we could start focusing on things that had been ignored for years on, on end. Because we always had a pecking order, and we drew a line and says, can't afford that. And so things like bike paths, things like the Marsh Road channel, which is very, a very serious problem that we have here, weren't funded, and they, every year they fell off the list. Now we're doing things like, you know, cape sealing the roads every year, making sure that we're on a turnaround process, so every five or six years, we're going to hit every road. So I think that we need to continue to have this money, and I think it's important for us and you to tell all your neighbors that we need to have it. We need to fund our police department properly. But I think that we need to make sure that we're doing it judiciously with the amendments the, the city manager discussed, and really with some consideration on that option B, for some variation, which I assume we could direct change in an option B that gets us more along the, the flat tax. But that's, that's my two cents.
Am I hearing you say that you, you want to not renew the parcel tax in its existing form?
What I said was, I think I'd like to have some discussion on option B. Yes, I'd like to have some more discussion on option B, or a variant that would be less intrusive to perhaps some people on a smaller number.
So, so we just heard the survey professional challenge us about the fact that what was polled, even though it was a $750 number that was out there approximately, it was to renew the existing parcel tax. That's the key, the existing parcel tax. And you're recommending changing the parcel tax to, to go out and, and change the, the terms of it at this point, notwithstanding the circus club? I understand the circus club. I mean, you can cut and slice and dice that any way you want. I mean, one of the things is, is it's a private club, it's not a half-acre valuation, you know, it's not a two-acre valuation. But if it hasn't been changed for 20 years, I think a lot of this has not been changed for 20 years. I think that we are on very thin ice if we try to go out with anything other than a renewal. In 2009, we were at the same position that we're in right now. Our back is against the wall, and we did not take the, the chance of educating our residents about any alternative revenue enhancement program the previous years leading up to the parcel tax. Here we are at the last minute again, and I believe we would be very foolish to try to massage these numbers and go out with anything but the absolute exact renewal. If we want to massage the numbers for the next go-around in the next four years, I think our council needs to come together and commit to open that up for discussion January 1st, 2014, and look not only at modifying the parcel tax to maybe what Councilmember Dobbie is recommending, a flat tax, or massaging it in some other way, but other revenue enhancement opportunities such as maybe a utility users tax, or maybe, as Councilmember Dobbie is continuing saying, maybe looking at a real estate transfer tax, or other opportunities that we can look at and poll the residents about that, educate them over the next three or four years before we, our backs are against the wall. I think that anything but passing the parcel tax in its exact same form, renewing, would be a disastrous scenario, and we are setting ourselves up to fail. As far as your opinions and about tying the parcel tax funding to paying down our unfunded liabilities, every one of us wants to pay down our unfunded liabilities. And the Finance Committee actually has brought forward additional revenue suggestions of paying accelerated payments over the ARC that is required for the unfunded liabilities. And that was brought to us, you've seen that. So that's already in motion. And to, I, I appreciate the city manager's ideas on how we can make, make a motion now, but I think mixing the, the two, it's like mixing the metaphors. I think that the, what, what we do with our reserves is something that the council has the option of deciding, separate from the parcel tax. I think what we need to do is just focus on the parcel tax and renewing it, and making sure that we do not experience a structural deficit in our operating budget going forward. We do have a balanced budget at this time. It's not to say that it will continue. We're, we're projecting good things because our property tax revenue is up. But we, and we've made structural changes in our organization, thanks to the foresight of then Mayor, Mayor Dobbie and Mayor Whitmer over the last couple of years. So we, and the full council going along with it. And it's been painful, so I don't want to see that, all that hard work be for nothing at this time. So I just think that we need to focus on passing the parcel tax with the recommendation from the professional survey and from, I think, our resident who has had more experience in passing the parcel tax than any of us here, recommending, you know, Phil Lively, because he understands what it takes. And I appreciate your involvement this time again, one more time, Phil. So that's my position. And I, I just think we really need to go forward unanimously. When we passed the parcel tax in 2009, all five council members were in unanimous agreement. I think that's very important for the council to be unanimous. You were, you were on the committee, you got on the committee, you worked hard, and then... Right. So, yes, because of that, so I think that four years is not a long time. I think that keep it simple, keep it straightforward, don't bait and switch the residents. Let's just go forward and pass the parcel tax ordinance as it is, and, and then the other monies that we have, we can as a council decide to allocate to pay down the unfunded liabilities. Not, one of us does not want to do that. Every one of us wants to do that. Good. I just want to reemphasize. So, any other, I think Councilmember Dobbie wants to say something.
Well, first of all, may just be my personal opinion, but I think option B is going to make much difference to the passing of the parcel tax. Not a huge amount of money, and you know, we can end up four years from now going through this whole same thing, saying, well, we don't need to worry about fairness because we'll do it in the next four years. Fairness in my mind is very simple. You want to, you want to have everybody treated correctly. The parcel tax is to provide services to our residents. And whether you have a quarter of an acre, a half an acre, 10 acres, you get roughly the same services. And so instead of going to option C, which is the one I probably would have preferred, I'm willing to gradually do this, so that we move slowly until it's fair to everybody. And as far as the long-term liabilities go, you know, the mayor talks about everybody knowing about that. For years, we didn't even know where our long-term liabilities were. And the way CalPERS is going at the moment, they're still, they're still talking about making 7.5% in investments, which nearly everybody knows is never going to happen. They'll be lucky to make 4%. And therefore, the quicker we can pay off these long-term liabilities, the more money we're going to save for the residents at this time. And therefore, my feeling is, I want the parcel tax passed. I don't think option B is going to make much difference whatsoever, and that's the way I would like to see it done.
My, my other comment. I made, I made two, two comments to start with. One was Section 3, which obviously is part of it. And I think that hopefully we're all in agreement that the city manager needs to go back with the council and make sure that the council does understand that they each year have to make a conscious decision on whether or not to exact the full parcel tax or not, which I think is, is a positive selling point for this to any resident, that the fact is we don't have to sell, we don't have to ask for the same, the full odds are we will for the first several years, and maybe even for all four years, based on where we are. However, the fact that there is that choice, I think that we need to make sure that we actually fulfill our responsibilities that we have here and that are written into this, and we need to make sure that they're done. Secondly, secondly, I think we can make a decision, and, and ask the city council...
Excuse me, I, I just... You're not wanting to change what's already in.
It's not a change, it's already there.
Yeah.
We're asking the city manager to make sure this is part of the budgeting process, which it isn't today.
But, but that has nothing to do with passing the parcel tax ordinance. That would be another thing that we're talking about, another item that we bring up, because that's up to us to direct, you know, the city manager.
It could be.
No, I mean, I understand, Bill, that what you're trying to say, and I think you're making a good point. I think you're just trying to mix it up too much, because it's already in there, so we're not making a change to that. And all we need to do is, is make, make sure that we pay attention to it.
Can I fix this? One of us gets to write an impartial analysis that explains this to the voters, only one of us.
That's the turning.
And I hear, I hear Mr. Whitmer loud and clear, and I'd already made a mental note, there are certain things that the voters should be apprised of, and one of them is, it's not automatic every year, it's up to the council to determine that the money's needed. That's a very good point. It will be in the...
It hasn't been in the past. It hasn't been clearly passed.
Well, it will be, because I haven't done one in the past. The other thing is, I believe you can consolidate Measure 3 and 4 together, because it used to be consolidated. And apparently, Whitmer thought it'd be clearer if you separated it. I think it's clear if you put them back together. Because otherwise, I mean, what would you do if they passed the tax and didn't pass the appropriations limit change? You can't, you can't spend the money. And that's, I mean, the whole purpose is, they want you to spend it because they're going to pass the tax. So that can, we'll look at that, but I think we can put those back together.
So, okay. And I appreciate the fact that we want to all accelerate our payments over and above the required, annual required contribution or ARC to pay down our unfunded liabilities. I think that's, that's everybody. I, I don't think it has anything to do with passing the parcel tax at this point. So...
Well, when I brought it up to the city manager, he seemed to think it was, it was all right thing to add on. I thought that that'd been something that all of us would be in favor of doing. I realize that, is it directly related 100%? No, but it's not something that I think is, is, is a detriment to passing it and making everybody happy about the vote.
I don't think that it's something that is part of what we can take action on, because it was not agendized. What is agendized is the passing of the parcel tax measure. It's not agendized to allocate, pass the allocation of what the funds would be used for, or any other general reserve funds.
That's why I called him this morning to have the discussion.
But it's not on the agenda.
No, but you can certainly add that as a recommendation, that staff return in August with that budget amendment.
It's not an action, it's to return, but that would be a separate issue than what we're passing here.
Well, the question is, can we make that recommendation?
Absolutely. We can make that recommendation. I...
Question is, will we make that recommendation?
You've made that recommendation.
And I haven't heard anybody say yet.
I said...
I heard you say, it's not necessary, it's not on the agenda, we're not even talking about it.
No, I didn't say it wasn't necessary. I did not say it was necessary.
I didn't say, okay. I take that back, you didn't say it was not necessary.
Okay, I said it's not on the agenda.
Can I ask for a point of clarity? I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm, I haven't gone through this yet, so I had, and I'm listening to the mayor and Councilman Whitmer. And I know that by creating an amendment to this and giving some direction of what we do with some additional funds, it's possible that it can be done. Does that sound correct?
Well, no.
Not, not, not at this moment.
Right.
Not tonight. You would be...
We would just...
We'd be approving this language.
Yes, right.
As written.
Right. Yes, right. And then, as an aside, directing staff to bring back the budget amendment in August to increase the contribution to pay, to accelerate our paydown of the unfunded liabilities, which is coming from the finance director anyway.
Already.
Already.
It will come, it's on the Finance Committee's next agenda for consideration.
Which is July 23rd.
23rd. What Councilmember Whitmer was articulating is in the current fiscal year. I suspect that the Finance Committee's recommendation will be prospective. It would probably take effect the next budget cycle. I think Councilmember Whitmer was articulating, we need to do something this budget cycle and...
Sooner rather than later is better for me.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what we started last year, and actually it paid a lot of dividends this year.
Yes, the side...
Right.
I agree with that. So, but I'd like to focus, bring us back and call for a motion to have, I'll, I'll make the, I'll make the motion, that we adopt the two ordinances as proposed, the ordinance to have the Town of Atherton call for a parcel tax renewal in its existing form for an additional four-year extension, and to also pass the ordinance for a four-year increase in the appropriations limit.
Madam Mayor, if we can combine those into one, would that meet the...
And combine both of those measures into one. Absolutely. So I've made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, I would like to make an amendment. I would like to make an amendment. Well, you know, if we, if we vote on this right now, there's no change to what's written here as far as, at a minimum, the circus club, right? So, so I'm not in favor of, well, I, I, we can vote, and I, I'm not in favor of even moving forward without making a change to the circus club provision, so, so...
Procedurally, if Councilmember Whitmer wants to make an amendment to the motion, he can make a motion, substitute, make a motion to amend, and then state the amendment. And if he gets a second, then you have to vote on it.
Sure. Sure, okay.
So I'd like a minimum amendment that, that the payment or the taxing fee be amended to adjust the private club tax to a minimum of $25,000.
So there's a, a motion to amend?
It has to be...
$25,000.
So I have a motion to amend. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye. Okay, no opposed? So we voted on the amendment and the motion.
And is it the council's consensus that I return in August with a report for the budget amendment?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, so we have a parcel tax that's going to be put on the November election ballot?
We voted on the amendment.
We just, you haven't voted on the parcel tax. Now vote on the... It's on the floor, there is a motion and a second now, and it's been amended.
Oh, okay.
Now you vote on the underlying...
Yeah, okay, so all in favor with the amended amendment?
The amendment.
But, but the amendment's passed.
Now you're voting on the ordinance.
On the ordinance with the amendment. All in favor? Aye. Aye. One opposed. I'm sorry you're doing that, because we need to be unanimous in our vote. Would you please recon, yes, for going forward? It isn't for you.
In my mind, option B, option B, I think, not make any difference to the possibility of passing this.
That's to Dan. I'm very sorry, Mr. Dobbie.
Can I make a, since, George, can we also keep these notes for all future? Instead of rehacking a lot of this, there's a lot of great information that we've come up with. And if we do another survey in the future, you know, to please ask these questions and realize that, you know, there are differences in parcels. If we decide in the future to go for a flat rate, then I think it's something we have to pull for, and it, you know, in the big picture...
Residents have to be educated if you're going to change the, the terms of the deal. So the parcel tax measure putting on the ballot in November has passed three to one. The amendment passing unanimously. Something strange. I thought, that doesn't make sense to me, that if you vote and, and vote on an amendment to the motion, you're voting on the entire motion with the amendment.
No. No, I'm sorry. Procedurally, it's, you take, it's like layers, peeling off the... The first thing you do is you vote on the amendment, or a substitute motion, motion as well. You vote on those first, and then you take the amended motion now, and you vote on that. And it's certainly within council members, everybody could have already known if they so chose.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go on to item number 16, which is to adopt a resolution setting priorities for filing primary arguments regarding the measure and directing city to prepare and impartial analysis to be printed. City Manager or Teresa, whoever wants to take that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is basically the resolution, as you said, set priorities and file the primary arguments. It would be appropriate if the council wishes to do so, to establish a subcommittee of the council to help with writing the argument, primary argument. And it needs to be submitted by August 16. So that would be, it would show back up on the council's agenda, that subcommittee worked on it, probably at the study session on August 7 would probably be the best time to do that.
So, any questions or comments to City Manager regarding the preparing the analysis and the rebuttal arguments?
No, it was similar to the process we used last year.
What we did last time, last time council was unanimous in its support, and we nominated, we formed an ad hoc committee to work with staff and to write the primary arguments. There were no arguments against the parcel tax in the ballot. I have the ballot from the last time here. And so do you want to form an ad hoc committee to write the primary argument in favor of it, or let City Manager do that? Carrie?
I'm in favor, as long as the language is consistent with what it was in the past and with Bill's input, obviously. Deverning it to staff.
Bill doesn't write the argument.
He writes the impartial analysis.
I apologize, but staff.
Would you like to be on a subcommittee with me to write the argument in favor?
Yeah, I would be at that special session on the subject. We're going to be reviewing it there, but I won't.
You will not be there.
I will not be there.
Well, we will, but, but you may call in.
I'll begin negotiation sessions, but I'm ready, I have time, I don't, I can't promise.
This is just to draft an argument, but then we'll come back to the city council for approval.
On August 7, August 7. I'm happy to help write it, and I would, if I write it with you, Elizabeth, that I'm more than happy to have you represent me at the meeting.
Perfect.
Sounds good. So move along?
Public comment? Public comment?
Oh, sure, yes. I keep forgetting about the public sometimes. This is my first one.
His first time.
On the arguments four, I just hope that you make it clear that if it's not passed, that a million one will not be available for the price for the police, and 700,000 for streets and roads. So it's, that the voters know that 20% of the police budget is in that parcel tax, and if it does not pass, that that's inferring that they want to reduce the police expenses by 20%. I think that'll pass it on its own.
Any other members of the public? Okay, so...
Madam Mayor, in adoption of this resolution, you would name it to... Madam Mayor, in adoption of this resolution, you would name the two council members, and in one of the whereas's, you would also note that those may be combined, assuming to adoption of ordinance.
Okay, good.
Actually, the, the resolution in front of me has two options, and I want to make sure it's clear. It says the city council authorizes all members of the city council to sign it, or some certain council members, because it says to file a written argument. Usually the way it's done is a subcommittee does it, and it comes back to the council, and the council then is authorized to sign it. It doesn't have to be all members of the council if they don't choose to do so. But at least it comes back for the council to decide if they want to sign it, because it might object to vote.
So, can I, can I ask if, can a council member choose to sign the argument in favor of it, even though they voted negatively?
Yes.
Okay. Think about that.
All votes are independent.
You mean?
Yes.
I think if all council members would sign it, it would be a positive message. And I think that Mr. Dobbie is, if I could, because my, my, my two cents, too, a flat tax is a flat tax, and we, you know, unfortunately, we got around to discussing this thing too late.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll give us that. You know, we should, we should have done it earlier.
And we didn't poll on it.
And I, I don't put the, the same credibility on the poll and the comments by Tim as, as everybody else, because I remembered the question, because Carrie and I and George helped put it together. But, you know, I think it's important that we pass the tax, and I think it's important that the people understand that we all think it's important. And I think that I don't want to speak for Councilmember Dobbie, but I think he believes it's important. I just think that, you know, he, like, like myself, I felt that it should be some sort of a flatter tax and less differential, and that's what we discussed in, in July. However, as with other things, you know, I think it's in the best interest of the town for all of us to be together on this. That's my two cents, and I would hope that everybody could join in.
So in passing this resolution, we will take what part of it out?
The whereas's, you combine as consistent with the ordinance, and name two council members to serve on that subcommittee.
Okay.
And I think you're saying the mayor and Councilmember Widmer.
Yes.
Done.
Okay. So I'll, I'll move to pass the ordinance.
This is a resolution.
The resolution, in, in concert with that.
We're not going to have the rebuttals and revolts to rebuttals.
No, I hope not.
I agree.
So, well, we can, we can limit it, right? There's just going to be a four, and if somebody submits an against, then that's the against, but there's not going to be then the rebuttal.
Rebuttal of a rebuttal?
It's up to the city council to determine.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't, we have just a, you know, one, one go-round of the ballot measure arguments.
We, so, we've never...
Well, we had, last time, we had, you know, lots of people were writing lots of...
Well, that was for the measures.
Yes, right.
It's scar to avoid that.
Teresa, maybe you can help me here. The question is...
Rebuttal arguments?
If, if, if the council writes the four proposal, if somebody does file a rebuttal or a, 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 a...
An against.
...opposition, does that automatically allow for rebuttals to be filed? I thought there was some...
I believe we would have to file a, a resolution allowing that.
It's right here. It's in section two.
Yeah. This says that... Well, I would adopt it the way it's written, and let us look at that, because we can come back and change that, because it's a resolution, we have plenty of time.
Well, I think we should say that, I think it says that all previous, there's a Section B in here that says that all previous resolutions providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments for city measures are repealed. Would that, would that take precedent over Section A?
No, that, that's just saying that there's no confusion, confusion about what you've done in the past.
Okay. Which we, I don't think have the...
Look, there's, there's no harm, no foul here. Just if you adopt it this way, you can come back later on. At the next meeting, they'll be able to, to give you an option if there is one.
Yeah, I just would assume that this was in here, because that's what we agreed to last time for the, for the ballot measures. And so it's probably, you know, left in, but, you know, I think that that's not a step that we need to have here.
It's pretty common, but my recollection is you don't have to allow rebuttal arguments, but I don't want to make that call from here, because I, I'm not sure.
You know, my recommendation, would we not?
Okay. I, I agree with that. Yes, sir?
To your seat of the opposition, you may want to rebut it. If something's erroneous, you'd want to rebut it. So don't review yourself.
They're viewed for some degree of validity. If I remember right. Teresa told us last time.
No, with respect to oppositions, they can give their opinions, and their opinions can be, as long as they're not patently false, in which case then we can file an election challenge that has to be decided before the election. But it's got to be pretty clearly false in order to survive that.
Okay. So I made a motion to adopt this resolution with Councilmember Widmer and me writing the primary argument.
I will second.
And combining the two if possible.
And combining the two measures if possible.
I'm still second.
Okay. And there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's passed unanimously. We're going to go on to item number 17, which is the Civic Center Master Plan contract approval. Mike, are you ready to give us this stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Lewis, members of the city council, after June meeting, the city council approved the selection of HMC Architects to prepare the Civic Center Master Plan, and directed staff to negotiate a consulting services contract with HMC Architects for council review and approval. The initial scope of work and fee proposed by HMC totaled $289,800. Through discussions and direction from town staff, HMC revised their scope, which resulted in a final not-to-exceed fee of $181,000, or a reduction of...